Diliberate an act on extension of agreement between the City of Raton and the Raton Country Club for management of the city's governmental liquor license. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, in January of 2015, the city did issue a request for proposals for management of a municipal liquor license that is restricted to the convention center and events in the convention center. It was a competitive process, and Raton Country Club was awarded the contract by the commission at that time. The contract was for a period of a year, and it allows for renewal. And this is something that is regulated through a state agency, as you remember. Our recommendation is to renew the agreement for a period of a year.
There's any questions from Mr. Berry?
No, I believe they've done a pretty good job at the events they serve at, so...
It's worked well.
Yeah, so I'll move that we approve the continuation of this professional service agreement with Raton Country Club for lease of liquor license.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to extend the agreement between the City of Raton and the Raton Country Club for management of the city's governmental liquor license. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Diliberate an act on fiscal year '16 Audit Service Recommendations, RPC, CPAs, and Consultants, LLP. Michael Allen?
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet this evening is our recommendation to enter into an agreement with RPC, CPAs, formerly Accounting and Consulting Group. This would be the third year of our multi-year contract, so then, starting next year, we would have to go out for RFP again. They would, however, still be eligible to do another three years because the maximum is six.
Maximum is what?
Six consecutive years. But this is the third year of our first multi-year contract with their firm. You will see on page two of the contract, it breaks down the fees, which these fees are shared by all three entities, Raton Waterworks and RPS, the largest portion, of course, being the city, because our financial statement preparation takes a lot more time than the other two entities. But then ours also includes a single audit for this next fiscal year, and then we would have our lodgers' tax audit as well. But the total combined for this contract would be $55,407, which is a slight increase over last year's amount, which was, this would be $549 more than last year's contract. So usually in a multi-year contract, the three years are not exactly the same. There's a slight increase from year to year.
I'll make a motion to approve FY '16 Audit Services Recommendation, RPC, CPAs, and Consultants, LLP.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Audit Service Recommendation of RPC, CPAs, and Consultants, LLP. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Diliberate an act on award of fuel farm phase two, RFP. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, we did issue a request for proposals for the construction, the design and construction of the fuel facilities at the Raton Airport. The project consists of the replacement of an existing 2,000-gallon tank, and this would complete the fuel improvements that are required of us by the regulating agency, which is through the Storage Tank Division of the Mexico Environment Department. We did receive two proposals, both from very highly qualified firms. We were pleased with the proposals. There is some information that we still need to pull together to finalize the evaluation process, so we would ask that we delay the action of award on this until the next meeting. We need to have some discussion with State Aviation also, who provides the bulk of the funding on the project. So we do have those proposals in hand. We expect a good contractor, and we expect to bring that to you at the next meeting.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to delay? So I'll move that we delay the action.
Until the next meeting?
Until the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone the action on the award of the fuel farm phase two, RFP, until the next meeting, which is, what, May 24th. Diliberate an act on Resolution 2016-24, Fiscal Year Ending '16, Budget Adjustment 11.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is budget adjustment number 11. Under the general fund expenses, you should have a revised resolution of the Fire Department and the Police Department, and I met yesterday and went over a few items that I felt was necessary to add to this budget adjustment, so we didn't need to wait till the next meeting. But in our general fund expenses, we are simply just moving monies around within the various line items, so the net increase is zero to the general fund. And in our special revenue, that one as well is just line item adjustments. In addition to the recreation fund, we have a little bit of savings in the utilities that we're going to put towards the concession supplies. And capital projects, we received some insurance money last year, and then also the balance of the insurance proceeds on some roof damage at the senior center. So that budget adjustment is just to increase the revenues to account for those insurance proceeds, and then to also increase our expenses. We are currently moving forward with the library conference room project and some roof repairs, so that will allow us to complete that project. And then also under the trust and agency, Fourth of July is coming up, and this budget adjustment would allow us to take the balance in reserve from our fireworks donations that were collected the past year and pay the fireworks vendor with those monies first and zero that out, and then we would take the remainder out of the lodgers' tax, non-promotional. Is there any questions on any of the budget adjustments that we're requesting?
I have no questions.
No questions here.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2016-24, Budget Adjustment Number 11, Fiscal Year '16.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget adjustment number 11, 2016-24. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing, review, and discussion of fiscal year '17 draft budget.
Mayor and Commissioner, we really have not changed anything from the draft budget that you previously received. We did talk about a couple of issues at the last meeting. We've kind of internally identified a couple of minor revisions that we'd like to clean up in there, but there were a couple of issues, I think, that were brought forward, and we said we'd come back at this meeting and address those. And on my list here, I've got a discussion of how we price concessions at the Aquatic Center, potential of an administration fee for utilities for management or administration of health insurance through the treasurer's office. We talked about the potential of retaining a consultant to try to navigate some of the health insurance rules and costs and directions that we can go. And we also had a discussion in regard to clothing allowance that's in the budget. So I'll throw those things out if the, and I think what we're looking for is direction from the commission in regard to those items, how you would like to see that put in the final draft budget. And if there's any questions that I can answer, treasurer or other staff are certainly available to provide any information to the commission, it might help.
I might have asked this before, but does the receipts from the Aquatic Center, is it brought to this office, to the treasurer's office every day?
Yes.
Okay. And do they have the ability to pay with credit card over there also?
Commissioner, I'm going to let the treasurer talk about this because that's kind of a detailed discussion, but...
Yeah, I think we mentioned at the last meeting that this month, the Waterworks and myself and RPS have like a webinar conference call that we're going to hold to start working on the process to accept credit cards, but we're kind of trying to figure out really what our needs are and what we're going to need with our accounting software and all of that. The Aquatic Center isn't currently linked to our accounting software, so whatever systems we get in place, we would like for credit cards to be accepted at the utilities, the Aquatic Center, Municipal Court, and the Clerk's Office as well. So we're going to try to implement a system in this next fiscal year so that if we can kind of determine the costs now going into the draft budget, hopefully, whatever we find out in a couple of weeks, we can come back to you and say this is what it's going to cost to implement the credit card processing. And then, of course, our bank will be a part of those discussions as well, so...
And of course, commissioners, one thing we want to keep in mind is the world is changing pretty quickly, and, you know, a lot of people, online pay is becoming a more important thing. You can swipe something with your phone, and funds are transferred. And I don't know a lot about that personally, not something I've used, but we want to learn about that, find out about that, see what the potential is. So we've got some education to catch up on in regard to that, but especially at the Aquatic Center, that may be an option that we want to look into.
We do accept credit cards at the Aquatic Center, correct?
No. The city doesn't have the capability. We don't have credit card machines at any of our locations.
Well, we paid for one. I remember that.
Yeah, currently, we do not accept any credit card payments.
For the actual credit card system?
It was for a credit card system, yes.
I would have to check into that.
It would have been when they opened up, when Geneva was the clerk.
Well, being that they're not connected with our in-code accounting system, he does have an accounting system for like recreation centers where he enters his information, and they run the gate receipts and the concession monies, and then he prints reports out and reconciles everything that's collected, and then he brings those reports to us with the cash checks. They do accept checks. Now, if credit cards was a component or a feature of his accounting system, maybe it just was never, we may have it, it just never was put into service, I guess. So he may be already set up. We just maybe need to finish the process to set that up. But no, he does not currently accept. He has, he can accept credit cards for like registration fees for Master of the Mountain using like a third-party vendor, and then that vendor sends us a check.
Right.
So if that's one of the ways that he does accept credit cards, but that is through like a third-party vendor.
Neil?
Yeah, I remember that very well, Mayor, that they bought the system. It is set up to accept credit cards, but I don't believe we ever purchased a part to activate, if I remember correctly.
And I would point out that, you know, what we're looking into, also, we're including the utilities in the conversation and payment of utilities through some of these methods, potentially court fees. We have a number of things to think about here, so we'll be doing our due diligence on that.
Would you check into that?
No, I will. I'll have to probably get a manual or something on his system to get more familiar with what its capabilities are, and what, I could go back and pull the invoice and see what we actually paid for.
It was quite expensive. It was not budgeted for. It was not approved by the commission, but that's why I remember it so well. But we do have something.
No, thank you.
Are you correct? I remember that.
We'll certainly check into that.
Addressing the clothing allowance, I feel that it should be left alone as is. There was a reason why they arrived at this point now, and I think that it should be left as is.
I agree. I think it's important for our people to look nice, and I think, I'm not sure if you want to start collecting receipts, if that would make the system tighter or more cumbersome, but I believe the clothing world should remain. I think it's important for our city employees to be dressed well.
I agree with, I agree with the keeping it as is also. I like the continuity and then speaking in a service-type thing that instills pride, so I would like to leave it as it is.
Okay. And that's what, you know, we're looking for consensus of the commission and direction from you and what you'd like to see in there, so that's helpful. We have put together some data on how concessions are priced. We realize that we, you know, want to be at the right price on things like that. I would suggest to the commission that we go forward with the revenues that we budgeted, but if we see room for improvement, we'll certainly implement that, you know, at the Aquatic Center and, you know, hopefully boost those revenues. But the manager of Aquatic Center has provided data. I'll make that available to the commission. I just got it on my desk here, but we'll share that with you as to, you know, how that's priced and certainly accept input. But I'm not sure that it's necessary to, you know, adjust the budget. Hopefully, we just, you know, have some upward movement, and we can see an increase in revenues over the season, so...
Are they paying attention to, you know, what items are requested more often?
Right.
Or something that they may not be offering that might be sell well?
Sure.
Paying attention to public demand? And I'm guessing that the answer to that question is yes, but obviously, that's important.
We're doing a review of that now, so we'll try to get some information to the commission on that. And of course, some of the big sellers have an inventory that is available to sell.
Exactly, yeah. Don't even look at things that we don't have, don't currently have available that might sell well possibly and bring in some dollars.
Right.
I think another idea we talked about, we could even look at more vending-type machines.
That may be a good option.
There's some options.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So we want to bring you some information on that. We like the idea of at least looking into the vending machine potential. You can sell, you know, about anything in a vending machine, so we'll try to get together some information for you, bring that to you. The other thing we talked about is health insurance and where that's going, and I would say that we've got a ways to go on that process. And so as we move along, maybe it's not something that we revise in the current budget, but as we move along through the process, if we can find a way to be more efficient with our healthcare dollars, we want to bring that to the commission and have a discussion of what the plan is. So we're working on that. Really, the whole group is involved in a discussion of that, and we plan on having more conversation with you as to where we're going.
Under solid waste, I can't see anywhere. I can't see this stuff very well, anyway. There was no breakdown for revenues brought in by recycling. Is there a reason for that, or?
Well, on page, there's two pages on one, so if you look under page 193, our solid waste revenues, we have charges for services. You probably are looking under the specific recycling department that's within, but you need to be on page, yeah, page 193.
Right, recycling revenues.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the thing I would comment on the recycling revenues is volumes are up, but the revenue that we could get for sending off a bail of any particular type of recycled material has gone down, and in some cases, gone down sharply. And I think it's a supply and demand thing. Of course, you know, a lot of communities are trying to ratchet up the volume of recycling, and so there's a lot of recycling material out there, and as there's, the supply is greater, the price drops. And in some cases with some material, we've seen a real significant drop in the last year or year and a half or two-year period on our ability to get revenue from it, so...
Yeah, it's reflected here. Okay, thank you.
I think on a semi-related topic, we kind of briefly talked about asking individuals to start using these reusable bags, and I think, you know, this meeting would be a good launching point to just do that as a public request, that people start utilizing more reusable bags, so we can cut down on the plastic bags blowing around.
And that brings up a point with the commissioner, is that some communities have taken action in regard to limiting the use or prohibiting the use of plastic bags, the old type of grocery bag that we're all accustomed to, and the reason is that they're very hard to control from, I think, the time that they leave the store until we get rid of those. But they contribute to blowing litter issues really all over the town. They're not really, I think, considered environmentally friendly. They're not really recyclable. They fall into that three-through-six category that, at least in Raton, we don't have a place to go with them, so they just go in the waste stream. But several communities, something that we've looked at a little bit, have taken measures to control those, and as Commissioner Schuster had suggested, more businesses don't provide those to the customers. You can bring your own bag with you and carry it out in that, and then reuse that bag over and over. And I think that would really contribute to helping with the litter problem. So we would take direction again from the commission if you would like us to go in that direction, pursue that. We would try to put together a draft of something in the way of an ordinance, if you would like to see that.
I know several cities have instituted a complete ban on plastic bags, and I can see the feasibility of it, and I would like to see it happen, but I'm also thinking about the vendors that have them. I think that we can't just jump out and say, "Starting tomorrow, this is that." We need to give them time, we need to give them time to use it up and to find other means for that. I'm just really certain it would help on the landfill and any litigation on the landfill in the future, so...
I think that stair-step approach where we start by, today, we start asking, "Start using your recyclable bags," or "reusable bags," and then we can progress into more maybe, more ordinance.
And I think certainly an ordinance would have a runout period that if a business had an inventory of these bags, they would have to use those. So I think that would be an element of such ordinance.
I'd like to see it presented to us then.
And then I think for your thought, some communities have a fee for use of plastic bags, and some have an outright ban on plastic bags. There's a couple of different approaches there.
Maybe we could start with a fee and then progress to the ban, possibly.
Does anyone else have any questions on the budget with Michael Allen?
I have none.
I have none.
As we had talked about at the last meeting, you know, it is a tight budget. I have issued a freeze on all hiring to department heads, and that would include replacement of retiring employees, any type of hiring. Now, when there's a proposal to add an employee, it would come to myself, the treasurer. We would have a budget review. A freeze on hiring does not mean that we absolutely will not replace an employee or hire employee during the year, but we do want to have tight controls on tracking that. We want to make sure that we can, you know, fit that into the budget, and there would be a compelling reason why we would add employees. But at that, at this time, that freeze is in place, and that's in line with the guidance provided by DFA. And in general, the guidelines and their common sense when you're in tough budget times are, you know, be careful about spending your reserves on those recurring expenses. I think we are mindful of that. The guidance tells the commission to be careful about your general fund being distributed to not-for-profits because that happens, you know. I don't think we really have that kind of a situation, but you do have that in some communities. What they're saying is to provide the basic services that a municipality is responsible for, and the hiring freeze is one of those issues. And in general, on any kind of big expenses to really monitor those. And so that's an element in our policy too, is that we may have a budget for items, but before we spend any, make any kind of significant purchase, that's going to go through this same review, and we would report back to the commission on that as well.
Has anyone considered whether or not we're going to fund the request that came in from the Arts Council? For a thousand some a month? Thousand five hundred, isn't it? Wish I don't have, can't put my hands on it. It was a request, and that would come out of non-promotional revenues.
And I would tell you that currently in the budget, there is a budget for $32,000 of funds to Main Street. They have requested an increase to $36,000, and we have anticipated a letter from the museum to consider them for funding as well.
Mr. Berry?
Yes, sir.
I would like to, you know, look at these organizations that are still requesting funds. As Mayor Manz pointed out in our last meeting, two or three years ago, we gave a directive for them to start looking for other sources of funding. Currently, I think we have a couple of organizations that don't even have complete boards, and yet we're still funding... yet we're still funding a significant part of their operation. I would really like to consider looking, re-looking at this and directing them to step up.
And I think that you're probably referring also as well to the chamber, and the agreement that we looked at last year, I think there is a provision for them to report back to the commission and have a discussion of, you know, costs versus benefits, so we'll make that arrangement with the, with the chamber for the next meeting.
Appreciate it.
So it's not something we have to decide this evening, is that correct? We, I thought you had to have final budget by the next meeting?
Well, generally, the, in previous years, the Lodger's tax budgets for the promo and non-promo are usually somewhat incomplete by the time we submit the interim budget. So a lot of those figures don't really get put into the interim budget, and we just take care of it during the final budget. So you would still have time, it's just if the funding is to start July 1, it would need to be in the interim budget, because once that interim budget is approved, that is the budget that we operate on until the final budget is approved. So it could be, if it's not in the interim budget, then it could be September 1st before, you know, anything additional that's put into the budget could actually be spent, if it's not in the interim to begin with.
And we certainly understand, from our perspective, that it's a tough conversation for the commission, and, you know, if you have feelings and you want to express those and you want to resolve it as soon as possible, then there's not a reason to delay that conversation. If we can get you additional information, we'll certainly bring it to you. If you need more time to look into it, think about it, it's, but, yeah, those are the requests that are there, and we're looking for some guidance from the commission.
I do believe the chamber's contract for tourism coordinator is going to be on the agenda for the Lodger's tax board next week.
Yeah, because that comes out of promotion.
So, they generally will give you a recommendation on that. So the chamber will be presenting to Lodger's tax board next week, and then certainly when I bring the interim budget to you on the 24th, if that's something that you want to consider at that time as part of the interim budget, is the recommendation that comes from them, then that could be included in the interim budget when it's voted on, on the 24th.
It's in here.
But yes, that one does come out of the promotional.
Yeah, it's in here for $30,000.
And we currently have funding and line items for, for these, for these three entities?
No.
No.
No, not at all.
I apologize, I don't have those notes with me today, because I came straight from work, but can you give me a quick?
The only one that I have, the other is from the Arts Council, and it's for $22,500.
Do you need a budget, Wendy, I'm sorry?
Oh, you don't have the budget, I'm sorry.
No, I have one at home, but I didn't get it.
So we have the, we have the letter from Arts Council, I've received a letter from Main Street requesting an increase from $32,000 to $36,000. $32,000 was the budgeted amount for this current fiscal year, the one we're in, and I think we have that set up in the proposed budget now, they requested it up to $36,000. The museum request, there may have been some funding a couple of years back, there is not in the current year. And the chamber funding is
Already budgeted?
Thirty, thirty thousand promotional money, we held that, and there is some execution requirements that go along with that, that the chamber would come to the commission and report on what you're getting for your, your money.
To the chamber or to the Lodger's tax board? I mean, to the commission?
Yes.
You're supposed to come to the commission?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I've never seen that happen.
Never seen that happen.
In the years that I've been a commissioner.
And I agree, I've never seen that happen.
Now, going back to Main Street, I still have them in there at 32,000. I've not increased any.
That's in the, that's in the proposed budget?
It's in the budget.
We've left it at 32, that's what they're currently receiving, but as the city manager stated, they are requesting 36.
Well, what I'd like to see personally, that we are funding these at this time, let's not have any increase whatsoever this, with this year of such a tight budget. And like you said, listen to the, to the chamber if they're coming and hear what's going on. But I don't, I don't want to see any increases, especially with the budget as tight as it is.
And keep in mind too, at our discussion last week, we were showing in the Lodger's tax non-promo, I think there was concern whether or not you had funds available in the non-promo. We are showing a projected ending cash balance of about $38,000. So, I mean, those are monies that currently would just be sitting in reserve, that you would be able to allocate funding to any of these additional funding requests if you so chose. The only one that is in there is the Schuler management contract that is in there. And that was approved in this past fiscal year budget.
The grant that we have from Economic Development, are we tracking that money, or is the Schuler Board tracking that money?
The treasurer is tracking that money, you remember at the last meeting, we did approve a fund for that, so all financial management would be through the city treasurer. We will treat it just like any other city funding.
So that'll bring the receipts to us?
The, the, what we anticipate is that we will have a city of Raton request for sealed bids for the equipment and for the construction, and we will treat it just like any other city of Raton construction project. We will manage it, we'll disperse funds.
Yeah, that's for the project.
The contract will come here. The Schuler Restoration Board is involved in the, the design, the formation of the request for sealed bids. And so we've had a number of meetings, and they're represented, Main Street is represented, all of the parties are represented. And I would point out that the Schuler Restoration Board was key, they were the driver in getting the funding, so they're certainly our partner on that, but it will fully go through the city of Raton process.
Yeah, that's the $100,000.
That's $100,000.
In the contract, we have to show that we brought in, I don't know, $35,000 or something like that?
Well
Who's, who's tracking those funds and who's accounting for that?
Yeah, the provision is that revenues that go, that come, are generated at the Schuler, that come to the city of Raton, will be accrued as security towards our performance on the $100,000 project. So, we, for usage of the Schuler, we will charge our standard fees, and they're billed out of our office to whatever entity is renting the Schuler, and we'll accrue those as well towards that security.
Okay, because I was thinking in the contract that we made with Schuler Restoration, they collected the fees, they took a percentage or something off the top, and how does that all work?
Well, you know, if somebody rents the Schuler, and they have a very successful event, and they charge whatever their ticket price is, whatever they determine, and they see a benefit from that, and let's say that the events that occurred over the weekend, which were very successful, and they were organized by Arts and Humanities, we have no problem with them making money on doing that, and there will even be for-profit organizations that will come and say, we would like to rent the Schuler. We have a standard rental rate for the Schuler. The thing that hasn't happened, that we need to talk about, is percentage of sale of commission, of concessions that come to the city. So we have kind of a standard price sheet of what we lease the Schuler for, and that will come here. Now, of course, they'll, they'll make money on that. So, whether that money is funneled through Schuler Restoration or not, we leave that to those parties to sign their contracts among themselves and decide who gets what there. We just simply bill for our standard rates.
For the rental.
Right.
Okay.
But we don't wade into, let's say if there's a contractual arrangement between Schuler Restoration Group, another party, and the act that they hired, we don't monitor those contracts, we let them work that out.
Okay, so when Economic Development comes here and wants to see the proof that we made the whatever, $35,000 or $25,000, those records will be the responsibility of Schuler Restoration?
No, they will be the responsibility of our office here. We will maintain those records. We will, and the closest thing I can compare it to is, let's say, a business license. So we'll issue that invoice out of our office, collect the money, do the accounting on it, accrue the money to fund, and like every other revenue, we'll have a record-keeping financial management of that.
Mayor, are you talking more about the digital film, how that's going to operate?
Well, when we, when we signed the contract with Economic Development, we stated we would raise so much money, because you're supposed to see an increase in revenues.
Well, what we stated was, we had an estimate of what those rental fees would consist of, and we stated that it was our estimate, so it's not a hard number.
So that's just on the rental?
Yes, and concessions.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
Yes, and concessions.
It's only on the rental and concessions?
That's right.
Do we get a percentage of the concessions?
We do, yes.
Okay, and who pays the grocery receipts on those?
The, the vendor would pay any applicable grocery receipts, I'm not sure what the rule is on it, but, you know, whoever is selling the ticket there is going to pay all the fees that go along with it.
Okay, all right, I'm just
The way, when the contract, when the contract happened with the Department of Economic Development, with John Varela, and did not, they say that that money would be put in a, not a line item, but in a certain fund, that
Yes.
To show them the required amount that we're going to have in there.
A restricted fund.
It's a restrictive, it would be a restricted fund.
So it's not in your current budget, but that was the approval last week, we're adding a fund 229 to the special revenues. So, in the budget you'll see next week, you'll see that new fund, and then we'll try to include the revenue and expense, an estimate, I guess.
Now, just for clarification.
Is there another line item for the $100,000, or is it that in that line item?
Well, I mean, the $100,000, I think's going to be spent.
Oh, sure, that'll be in out.
I mean, they're dispersing the revenue to us, and depending on what the bids come in, and the work, the construction project, I mean, one or two checks and it'll be spent. So, yeah, I was anticipating just showing it all in the 229.
The one line item, okay.
And then from this point forward, once the project is complete, then, yeah, the operational type revenues and expense will still appear in that new fund.
Okay.
The $100,000 is just kind of a one-time thing to get it set up and going.
Okay. In this budget, is there a place where we keep the account for the revenues from the Schuler? I thought I saw something.
It's currently in the general fund, so that's probably something that the city manager and I'll have to maybe move that particular line item into the new fund. It, Schuler revenues actually are on page one, and it's like, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven from the bottom, the line item on page one of your line item detail for the general fund.
Okay. Year-to-date, it was only $685, and we've only budgeted $1,500. Don't we need to budget $25,000?
It's never been a big moneymaker.
Yeah, we've got a very poor system of, you know, collecting
Oh, I know.
Rent on the Schuler, and I think we've taken positive steps to correct that. And so, yeah, we would, we would look for a significant increase in that, but we did say that we would accrue it over the, over a three-year period, and that would ensure the performance, that we'd said to EDD, we'll take those funds, and here's what we're going to do with them. So, we identified a three-year period. So, I don't know if it's going to be $25,000 in a year, but it's going to be something like that over the three-year period. And, you know, we don't have a good track record on it, so it's hard to really judge what's an accurate number. We just have to be diligent in our, in our collection of that rent currently.
Well, I recall that you and I discussed this at one time, and said that there were some people that were paying for the use of the Schuler, and then there were others that didn't pay for anything, and we were going to correct that by making sure that everybody pays the same fee.
That's correct.
I remember that, Commissioner Chad, I remember that conversation.
And so
I could tell you that we will be very diligent on, on holding up our end of that arrangement.
Yeah, we'll have to be, or we'll have to pay the $100,000 back. So, anyway, it's just another
Yeah, we definitely want to comply with the terms of the grant agreement. So, obviously still some unknowns about how the business end of it's going to run, but city manager, did you give them a timeline on this project? Are we committed to a certain timeline with ED, or?
Well, let's, let's talk about how the project goes right now. So, we've identified two potential systems, and one important thing with the system is that it's compatible with the El Raton system, because they're going to be a subcontractor to run, you know, a multi-screen arrangement there. So, if they order a film, it really has to run on both sets of equipment, we're going to ensure that that happens, so we've got a little bit of a design process going now. Neil Amaro from the El Raton is a part of our committee to make sure that that's, that it is all compatible. Their system is a little older, there is, you know, new, upgraded, better equipment out there, so it won't be strictly the same, but we want it to be compatible. Before we make any modifications inside the Schuler Theater, we have to put a plan in front of the State Historic Preservation Office and get their okay. So, what's going on right now is to formalize that plan, and have a submittal that we can put in front of the shipo, and work through their process. So, I don't know what their, you know, a timeline on their process, but we want to move this thing along during 2016.
Are we going to allow concessions in?
Food, that's what I was wondering, too.
Well, that's a good question, Commissioner, because when you go to a film, you kind of expect to have popcorn and a giant soda, so it's not easy to clean the Schuler, but yes, I would expect that we'll have to make a provision for concessions and try to manage that.
Because when I did the Christmas films, you would be amazed how many wads of gum I took out from kids, because I wouldn't allow any food or drink in the Schuler at that time. Is there any other questions for Michael Ann? Okay.
Certainly appreciate your hard work.
And like I stated last week, we still have some time, so if, if any of you have questions, please feel free to call the city manager or myself, and we can meet one-on-one to try to answer any of your questions.
And if we don't have any other requests by, from nonprofits, by a certain date, are we going to not even consider?
Sure, I think we have to.
Yeah.
And we'll take direction from you on that as well, but, yeah, I think we've got to wrap the process up.
You're the one that has to deal with it.
Well, like I said, if it's not included in the interim budget, and something comes in later, the funding could be delayed till September or later, till DFA approves our final budget.
Well, what would you consider for a deadline?
Well, I think it's a question of how much time you need to evaluate that, but when we put the packets together, we would ask that all information is in, let's, you know, a week before the next meeting, I think that would be the seventeenth. And so if, if there was a request or somebody had considered that, let's set the end of Business Day on May seventeenth. We'll try to get that information to you. That gives you a week to sort through those, and we'll plan on wrapping up the conversation at the May twenty-fourth.
So then we would essentially be approving a budget on the twenty-fourth. I will present it to you, and then any changes that are made, I mean, the commission would probably have to vote on each individual change, such as these requests, and then we could incorporate it into the interim budget and then have you vote on the final budget with all those changes. And then that would be the budget that I would be submitting by June first to DFA.
Right, it'd give you seven days.
And we would say that we would have a format of a public hearing at the twenty-fourth in regard to comments on the, on the budget at that time, is that correct?
And tonight is also a public hearing, so if there's anybody.
Three or two?
I'm not sure what the requirement is.
I think one is the requirement. We historically do two.
Yeah, this is the second one. And this is a public hearing on the budget, so if anyone in the audience has questions, this is your time to speak. None? All right. And we don't have to do anything with that, I believe?
Nope.
City Manager's report?
Mayor and Commission, last Wednesday, I did attend an inspection of the Malloya Dam and the Alice Dam that was performed by the Dam Safety Bureau and the State Engineer Office, and attendance also was Mr. Campbell. Got that completed. What we typically see is in about a month, we get the report from them, and it lists maintenance items that they may have seen, but they would tell you that both dams are in, in good condition. Then on Thursday and Friday of last week, I did attend the New Mexico Watershed and Dam Owners Coalition that was held in Angel Fire, and it was conducted on Thursday and Friday. They have speakers that consist of state engineer, personnel, engineers on technical issues, people that have initiatives going in watershed management, those kind of things. So we got that done. Also, Mr. Campbell attended that, that meeting of the coalition. And it's a, it's a pretty good group, it's pretty active in, as far as representing dam owners, and they also have issues in management of watersheds. Tomorrow, there will be a tabletop exercise of the emergency action plan for the Lake Malloya Dam. What the emergency action plan consists of is a plan that if there was an emergency with Lake Malloya, it would go through details of what emergency actions would be taken. The tabletop exercise is really to familiarize all of the parties that have responsibility in that emergency action as to what their responsibility is, so they're familiar with it. So if something did come up with a high-hazard dam like Malloya, everyone would be ready to respond to that. So that will take place tomorrow. To report to you on the construction of the multimodal facility, the contractor's moving along pretty quickly. He told me today that really intends to be done with the project by the end of June. Work that he's completed since we met last is the completion of the concrete mow strip, the sidewalk that's in front of the Wells Fargo Building, between the building and the railroad tracks, that's a nice sidewalk with a brick inlet. The contractors completed columns, trusses, and roofing on two bus shelters, or they were working on the roofing there today, and they're starting to look like a structure now. Up till now, it's been hard to tell what it was gonna be, but it's starting to look like that now. The remaining work will generally consist of construction of the parking area and landscaping, and there's quite a bit of sidewalk, concrete flatwork involved in the project. In regard to solid waste issues, the bears are out, the bears are active. We've got limited staff as far as following the bears around and cleaning those up. We do ask people in town, citizens, we get calls on that, and we ask them to try to follow a process to, to manage this bear problem. And so I know, I say this a lot to people, and I've probably said this here, but I know in our neighborhood, the truck, the truck picks up the dumpster Thursday mornings at about ten o'clock. We kinda have an informal agreement that we don't put anything out there until Thursday morning, and we really don't have any problems with that. So I ask people to do that. I would kinda ask that of the public now, if we can kinda manage that and know that collection day and work around that collection day, we'll really stem the bear issue. And we'll talk about the bear-proof containers a little bit more as well, but that's an effective thing. We're spending a lot of time picking up material that is dumped in alleys and dumped illegally, furniture, appliances, mattresses, and we would ask people to, please take those to our transfer station. The transfer station is open on Saturdays, and Jason, I believe that's ten o'clock in the morning till two in the afternoon on Saturdays, we're open. We'll take all of that material out there, we'll take the tree limbs, and it will really save a lot of effort and taxpayer dollars if people will simply take those. And in addition to being open on Saturday, of course, we're open every weekday. We don't have somebody out there on Sunday, but we're there six days a week, and if we could just get that transferred out there. We do have active neighborhood watch programs now, and we would ask the neighborhood watch people if they could not only be the eyes of, of the neighborhood as to things like that going on, but if neighborhood watch would kinda help with the bear cleanup. It's not strictly the responsibility of the city, and especially with the limited personnel that we have. You know, if people will get out there and lend a hand, we're gonna have a better community for getting citizens involved. Our crew has been involved in maintenance of transfer station, the old landfill, the closed landfill, in anticipation of an inspection by the Mexico Environment Department. They typically will inspect in the spring of the year, and of course, that's a time when we're really fighting windy conditions. So there's quite a bit of maintenance involved in keeping that in a, in a good process. And in regard to the bear-proof dumpsters, as we have said, the New Mexico Game and Fish had put in a purchase order to their vendor to construct the containers. There's a lot of containers, they're gonna be delivered a load at a time. This is really gonna stretch out over a period of about a year, and so it's not gonna have a big impact this summer. We hope to have everything in place about this time next year and have bear-proof containers. But there are measures we can take this summer to try to manage that problem, and we're expecting a dry year, so we expect we're gonna have a bear issue. I have worked with the New Mexico Environment Department and Gordon Environmental to try to move along our process of landfill reclamation. We do have a, a schedule for requesting bids for the contractor work, and we would anticipate bringing those bids to the commission in June and then start the earth moving in July. Currently, they're, the New Mexico Environment Department is in town for a couple of days at the convention center. They're conducting a training and certification process for recycling. So that's going on, and we've got our staff attending that and obtaining their certification or keeping their certification current. In Public Works, we focused on selected drainage areas that in past years have given us a problem, so we're, we've got a list of those, and we're trying to, to clean those up one at a time, so they're out there putting emphasis on that. And then we're taking some measures to try to respond to potholes and, and street problems. So we have added a temporary seasonal employee to try to bolster our ability to, to work on those street problems. You know, as I told you, hiring freezes on, but, you know, that's something that we need to do to respond to that. The aquatic facility, we have talked to Jared Chatterley about the preparations to get ready for the summer season, so there's, you know, seasonal help that's required there, people that are coming on, getting their certifications in, in line, and, you know, we just wanna get as many users of that facility as we can in the summer season, so that we're getting geared up for that. I think the last thing I've got, Mayor, is had some communications with DOS Aviation, and typically, as you remember, DOS provides pilot training to, to military organizations, to federal government organizations. They do look at certain aircraft manufacturers, but we've talked to them and identified that there is expected nationwide to be a shortage of qualified pilots. And we would like to work with them, we'd like to work with our federal delegation, and we'd like to work with New Mexico Educational Facilities in regard to trying to set up a local pilot training program. And DOS is very excited about that. We did talk to Congressman Luhon when he was here, we're trying to get information on his support for such a program, and we are talking to Santa Fe Community College about getting involved in that program as well. We're really just at the talking stage here, but DOS would like to put out a survey to anyone that's interested, whether they're in the area or wherever they're, they are, to try to gauge what the interest would be from potential young people that may wanna get into this, this field. So they've given me a link to the survey. I'm gonna put that on the city website, and I didn't bring that with me here now, but we'll try to get that up tomorrow. And if there's someone around the community or that picks up the information that said, I'd be interested in going through DOS training, and then they, they can have contact with DOS right there, and they'll get a little bit of information. But they're really trying to gauge interest in this program, and we're really starting this up off the ground. But DOS is a very experienced training operation. I think it'd be a first-class training for any young person that is interested in that as a career. And it, it, it works with our program, our efforts with the educational foundation to build those kind of programs that we can, you know, kinda keep our, our young people here for that, that educational part, give them opportunities and career choices. As we said, in the healthcare, that's another area for them that we're working on. John Davidson, met with him today, and he talked about, you know, sustainable communities and what he's doing with Santa Fe College there. So there's a lot of information that, that is, got a lot of potential, but we're trying to get this up and going and off the ground. I know the Commissioner Schuster has been very involved in, in that as well. And that's all I have, but Commissioner Schuster, if you have anything to add to that, we're trying to move all of that together, the educational facility, you know, DOS coming to our town and getting their operation started. And they said very, very positive things about moving that, moving that along. But of course, they respond to these proposals that are from these various entities, specifically through federal government or military organizations, and those organizations act on their schedule. So that's not in our control or, or in the control of DOS. We just try to be prepared as it, as it develops. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like a minute here to give you an update on the Paul Modrich on the nineteenth. It looks like there'll be representatives from Martin, Martin Heinrich, Udall, and Ben Ray Luhon. Either they or their aide will be here, and they're gonna present letters to Mr. Modrich. Dennis Roche and Dr. Campos will also be here, and they'll be giving a proclamation from the Senate and from the House. So it's gonna be on the nineteenth. Right now, there's a indication of the UNM Medical Department is indicating that they're, that they'll be sending people up here to see, especially the Oncology Department. Trinidad Junior College called, they, they didn't know anything about this, and, and they're, they're really excited, their medical and department over there. Currently, Pueblo Chieftain, Albuquerque Journal, Santa Fe, New Mexican, the Hefarno, and these, these will all, all gonna be present, plus KOAT TV, KOAT TV is gonna be here for, to do a live broadcast on it, and so I just thought I'd keep you up to date on what's going on there.
Tell them when and where. Tell them when and where.
Oh, the nineteenth, the nineteenth of May, Friday, Thursday, the nineteenth, it'll be at the Schuler Theater, followed by a reception. Everybody can come to this, it's not a closed reception now, and it'll be at the, at the Sweet Shop Restaurant.
Six o'clock.
It starts at six.
Six o'clock at the Schuler.
And Mayor Matt, you'll represent the city on the stage that night?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Is there anything else to come before this commission? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.